We are convening the legislative session for 2017-26, correct? For November 21st, 2017, for Wycomico County Council. Those who like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do. Our Father,
Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And we give you this close trust as we forgive those who trust us with their lives. And we just not to take this issue with the resources of evil. The power of your name is the kingdom. The glory of your name is the kingdom. Goodness gracious, to the eye of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Hurley, how are we going to make the approval of the minutes?
We have it listed as a consent agenda. The idea is to read each one of the minutes listed and then just have one motion adopting all of them.
Okay. So if the council, bear with me, what we'll do is read off each one and then we'll take the vote at the end or entertain corrections and then take the vote on all of the minutes at once. Entertain a motion to approve the legislative minutes from November 7th, 2017.
So moved.
Motion is second at the end?
I'm sorry.
We'll take a motion second at the end. But we know we have two votes already. Approval of open work session minutes from August 15th, 2017, in reference to the draft Wycomico County priority letter. Approval of open work session minutes from August 15th, in reference to the Mardella track. Approval of the open work session minutes from August 15th, excuse me, from September 5th, in reference to the fire service agreement. Approval of the open work session minutes from September 19th, in reference to the required audit for fire companies. Approval of the open work session minutes from September 19th, in reference to the draft land preservation. Approval of the open work session minutes from October 3rd, in reference to the water and sewer plan to the town of Sharp Town. Approval of the open work session minutes from October 3rd, in reference to the donation of land. Approval of the open work session minutes from October 3rd, in reference to the countywide water sewer and stormwater management updates. Approval of the open work session minutes from October 17th, in reference to the Wycomico County Board of Education. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. And we have a second. Any corrections on any of the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, minutes are approved. At this time, I would like to present, if I could, we have three proclamations to read today, if we could, for members of law enforcement in Wycomico County, which we're very proud as far as the job that they've done. These three individuals are exemplary above all others and that's very hard to be exemplary above any of the ones that we have currently in service because everybody's doing such a great job for our county. Gentlemen, if you could meet me at the podium here so I could read the proclamations. Sheriff, you certainly could join them if you'd like. You guys got room to come over here. How are you doing? New body camera?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. All wearing now.
Very good. The first proclamation reads as such. Whereas the Wycomico County Council commends David Crowell for devoting his time and effort to Wycomico County Sheriff's Office Community Action Team. And whereas David Crowell has served as a law enforcement officer with pride and dedication to Wycomico County. And whereas David Crowell has demonstrated his commitment to the safety of the citizens of Wycomico County. And whereas a part of the CAT team, David Crowell dedicated his work to combat illegal drug activity in Wycomico County. And whereas David Crowell, along with the CAT team, assisted in the arrest of 124 individuals involved in illegal drug activity. And whereas the efforts of David Crowell, along with the CAT team, removed a substantial amount of illegal drugs and firearms from the community they serve. Therefore be it resolved that Wycomico County Council takes pleasure in honoring David Crowell as Deputy of the Year for his service to the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office Community Action Team done this 21st day of November, 2017. Thanks, Mr. Sir. These will sound terribly familiar, but I think it's worthy to read each one, one at a time. Whereas the Wycomico County Council commends John Sushpan for devoting his time and effort to the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office Community Action Team. And whereas John Sushpan, Sushpen, right, correct? Sushpen has served as a law enforcement officer with pride and dedication to Wycomico County. And whereas John Sushpen has demonstrated his commitment to the safety of the citizens of Wycomico County. And whereas part of the CAT team, John Sushpen dedicated his work to combat illegal drug activity in Wycomico County. And whereas John Sushpen, along with the CAT team, assisted in the arrest of 124 individuals involved in illegal drug activity. And whereas the efforts of John Sushpen also with the CAT team removed a substantial amount of illegal drugs and firearms from the community they serve. Therefore it is be resolved that the Wycomico County Council takes pleasure in honoring John Sushpen as Deputy of the Year for his service to the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office Community Action Team done this 21st day of November, 2017. The final proclamation reads, whereas the Wycomico County Council commends Tyler Bennett for devoting his time and effort to the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office Community Action Team. And whereas Tyler Bennett has served as a law enforcement officer with pride and dedication to Wycomico County. And whereas Tyler Bennett has demonstrated his commitment to the safety of the citizens of Wycomico County. And whereas part of the CAT team, Tyler Bennett dedicated his work to combat illegal drug activity in Wycomico County. And whereas Tyler Bennett, along with the CAT team, assisted in the arrest of 124 individuals involved in illegal drug activity. And whereas the efforts of Tyler Bennett, along with the CAT team, removed a substantial amount of illegal drugs and firearms from the community they serve. Therefore be it resolved that the Wycomico County Council takes pleasure in honoring Tyler Bennett as Deputy of the Year for his service to the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office Community Action Team done this 21st day of November, 2017. Do you have any comments?
Folks, I want to thank everyone for the recognition of these three deputies. They truly serve with honor and distinction to all members here in Wycomico County. I can't say enough about these three men and the work that they continue to do every single day to protect the citizens that we serve. And God bless you all and thank you for recognizing these three men.
Thank you again, Sheriff Lewis.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, sir.
Good morning, Ms. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I have just a few housekeeping announcements to make. First, Resolution Number 158, 2017 pertaining to the Wycomico County Economic Impacts Scholarship Program, GPA, will be postponed to the December 5th council meeting. The Urban Services Commission closed work session with legal counsel will also be postponed to the December 5th council meeting. We have discovered that there are two resolutions that have the same resolution number. That's Resolution Number 129, 2017. It has been suggested that a motion be made to rename one of the resolutions. On the council table is Resolution Number 129, 2017 pertaining to the Fuel System Audit Report. That can be renumbered to Resolution Number 162, 2017 if council desires to do that.
And you're referring to resolutions that were passed prior to this meeting?
That is correct.
Not resolutions on the agenda today?
That is correct.
Okay, so in order for someone to present the motion exactly, what are the resolutions' numbers again?
It's Resolution Number 129, 2017, and it's to be renumbered to 162, 2017.
Do we need to know the subject matter of this particular resolution so that we know that we are amending the correct one?
It's pertaining to the Fuel System Audit.
Fuel System Audit.
Yes.
And the existing one that it's, this is the one it's replacing and the one that replaced is, does not refer to the Fuel System Audit?
Right. Resolution Number 162 has not been assigned yet.
Okay.
So entertain a motion to approve, entertain a motion for an amendment.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of amending Resolution 129, 2017, in reference to the Fuel System Audit to assign the Number 162, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Amendment passes. Amendment is approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing, Resolution Number 144, 2017, approving lease amendment numbers five and six between Wycomico County, Maryland and the United States of America for approximately 332 square feet of office space in the Wycomico County Airport Terminal Building for a period of 10 years, commencing on October the 22nd, 2017, and ending on October the 21st, 2027. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this morning.
Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 144, 2017. If you have any questions or concerns, please come to the podium, please state your name and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 144, 2017. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 144, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Does council have particular questions in reference to this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 144, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Next, we have on the agenda, discussion with Mayor Jacob Day on the city of Salisbury hosting the National Folk Festival and the Salisbury Marathon.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you have your entourage with you.
Always, right.
How about the Jack Heath guy? Is he here today?
He happens to be here, too.
Would the president of the council like to join you?
It's up to him and you.
Certainly would like to have him.
Okay. I have, let me just introduce everyone that I've got with me. Good morning.
Good morning.
Members of the council, Mr. President. I have with me Julia Glanz, who is setting up some diagrams. Julia's our city administrator, of course. I also have with me Jason Chance, who is the director of the Salisbury Marathon, Salisbury Running Festival. And Jason can give you a little more insight into his background. And Caroline O'Hare, who is the local manager of the National Folk Festival. So what brings us here today is we want to give you sort of some insight into these two rather large events coming to our community. Tell you a little bit about their, the logistics, the economic impact, the reasons why they're occurring, and also enable you to have any questions that you have answered. And of course, we appreciate the invitation and the opportunity to be here as we have a lot of planning ahead of us and a little bit behind us. So, let me start just by kind of explaining what these two things are. So, the National Folk Festival is a program managed by the National Council for the Traditional Arts. When you hear National Folk Festival, a lot of people are thinking it's either going to be Joan Baez or it's going to be a bunch of banjos. And it might be a little bit of both. But the fact of the matter is, the National Folk Festival is a, this will be the 78th, 79th, and 80th. We will host it for three years here. But then we have committed to, and part of the application process, it's a competitively bid national event. Part of the application process is you commit to putting on a festival of that size or larger in perpetuity. So it will be here with us forever, a legacy festival. So cities that have hosted it before, like Greensboro, North Carolina, the previous host city, cities like Chattanooga, Tennessee, Nashville, let's see, Bangor, Maine, Butte, Montana, Richmond, Virginia, those cities now have legacy festivals and rename it based on their region. Bangor is the American Folk Festival, Richmond is the Richmond Folk Festival, and so on and so forth. So, the event, the National Folk Festival, was founded actually as a federal project under the National Park Service. The NCTA was created and eventually became its own private entity. It still receives some federal funding, but it's mostly a private entity. The festival will draw between 100,000 and 200,000 attendees, starts on the low end and rises for those three years. And then the legacy festivals often attract more people than that. It's a two and a half day festival, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It is free to enter. It's not free to put on, but it is free to enter. It includes seven stages. This will include a highlight and a focus on Maryland arts, Chesapeake region, arts, crafts, music, et cetera, but also brings in all cultures. So anything that can be traced back to raw roots, anything, any true tradition. So that could be Irish folk music, Japanese drumming. I'm going to let you, when you talk, Caroline, get into it because you can do a better job than I can of hitting all of those things. But from a budgetary standpoint, this is about a $1.35 million endeavor to put on each year. About $720,000 of that is from private sponsorship. About $400,000 is from earned income at the event itself. That's beverage, food, sales, licensing to the artists who sell CDs and things like that. And they're required to pay certain licensing fees and permit fees. The proceeds of this event stay with the festival. Our fiscal agent is, while we have a contract with the NCTA, the city of Salisbury does, we have a fiscal agent who we have a contract with, which is Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District Committee. They'll manage and maintain all of the funds. The city of Salisbury doesn't receive any revenue from this, any proceeds, other than, you know, hopefully there's economic impact over the long term that we receive some proceeds from. As you know, I'm sure, the city of Salisbury doesn't have a sales tax. Most of our revenue is received from property tax revenue and personal property tax revenue. So there's not a direct benefit to us from that, but for the state, for the county, where you have sales tax revenue and where you have room tax, there's hopefully a great benefit there. In selecting the date, and by the way, I should have mentioned, this is in September 7th through 9th, 2018, that second weekend in September. We had the Wycomico County Tourism, Worcester County Tourism, Ocean City Tourism, and we even engaged Sussex County in conversations about when should we do this thing. Ultimately, Ocean City drove the conversation because we need their hotel rooms and we need Sussex County's hotel rooms. 200,000 visitors, even if a small fraction spend multiple nights, you know, that's a lot of hotel rooms. And given that we have fewer than 2,000 in Wycomico County and about 18,000 or less with all the beach towns combined, we're going to need every last one of those. So there's obviously some spillover into other communities, but I wanted to talk a little bit about economic impact. Direct spending, past festivals have seen between 15 and 30 million dollars at the festival site, three and a half to four times that in annual footprint, which gets into numbers that could represent more than 50% of our total tourism economy in a year, in one weekend. So it's pretty significant in terms of economic impact. The donations that we have received and commitments of donations so far include everything from Salisbury University donating its economic impact studies for each year. They'll track the economic impact each year for us gratis. Other considerations from Salisbury University, which includes some financial sponsors, dozens of committed sponsors, and we'll be announcing those and we'll be rolling each out. But again, that amounts to about $720,000. Multiple local philanthropies, the city and the state. The city excluding planning and equipment rental, the value of our man-hours donated on-site, police, fire, there's no payment from the festival to the city. It's about $275,000 just in those two and a half days. The state has made a commitment of about $525,000 per year, plus more in year one. And just to give you a sense of what that includes, MDOT through the MTA is donating buses, the Ocean City buses will be moving to Salisbury for that weekend. They are moving the Maryland Folk Festival, which is an annual event in Baltimore, from Baltimore to Salisbury, and combining it with the National Folk Festival.
Is the state in kind or cash?
Both.
Combination of both.
And I'll get to each of those. DHCD, Department of Housing Community Development, is donating $100,000 per year in cash. $75,000 to $150,000 in year one in cash for capital improvements over and above the $100,000 in operating. $400,000 in cash for the amphitheater. We're in conversations at about 10:45 today with DNR about DNR's role. Commerce is providing $75,000 per year through the Maryland State Arts Council, support for Maryland artists. And Maryland artists will be featured. And Ocean City, Town of Ocean City, Wycomico County Tourism, Worcester County, and the Ward Museum jointly pursued a grant for out-of-market marketing dollars, which in total amounts to $150,000. $75,000 from the state, I think $17,500 each from the four entities. We've had multiple hurdles that we have run into cleared by the governor personally. Can't put a dollar value on that, but it's been incredibly helpful. And before I jump to the marathon, and I'm just going to give an overview and then I'll be quiet. Before I jump to the marathon, are there any questions that come up yet or do you want me to just continue and then we'll ask questions?
Let's do, I mean, let's do one at a time.
Okay.
That'd be okay, sure. Questions from the council? From the festival? Joe, you look like you're ready.
Well, I'm not ready, but anyway. You know, I'm a music lover, so when I first heard about this, I was excited, you know, so. But I'm also a NASCAR fan and I go to Dover, or I have been going to Dover over the years, and I see what 100,000 people does to that city. I mean, it basically shuts that city down except for the businesses that use or generate revenue from the NASCAR race. And knowing people that live in Dover, a lot of them say, I ask them, I say, "What do you do when that weekend comes on?" They said, "We leave town." You know, so I'm wondering about the consideration that's being given to the citizens that live here all the time, that it's not going to disrupt their lives.
Sure.
And the businesses, it's not going to, it's not going to benefit from this, you know? Is it going to shut their businesses down and is it going to cost them money? Has there been any thoughts given to what's going to happen there?
Sure. So I don't think that, I don't think that there is a business that won't benefit from that number of visitors. It does potentially eclipse the size of a NASCAR race. More attendees are anticipated than can fit in Dover Downs. So it will be a significant event. The only thing that I think we can probably relate to you is our experience in Greensboro and Richmond. We've been to the Richmond Legacy Festival, and Caroline can speak to that, and to the Greensboro Festival. You almost don't know on Wednesday and Thursday before the event that there's any event coming. It doesn't disrupt the city. I expected our arrival there to be greeted with a city that was shut down and that couldn't function with this size event coming and all the preparation required. But there's, I don't want to say magic to it, but almost you can feel the expertise of the NCTA who does this in not only the national, but they put on those legacy festivals, too. They have a management role in many of them. And Wednesday, Thursday, in preparation, there's very limited impact in terms of the footprint. What we have heard is that it takes very, very thoughtful conversations with the businesses inside of the festival footprint because it's a very compact footprint. In Greensboro, there's a very large bank headquarters, was it?
It was a financial center, it was a large financial tower that was in the middle of the footprint. And they had conversations of, oh, sorry, thank you, of allowing actually some of their staff, and it was a probably about a 25, 30-story building, some of their staff to work from home on Friday, but streets were closed and areas were locked down after work hours. And that's why on Friday, the festival starts at 6:00, 6:30, to allow for businesses that don't have the opportunity for staff to work at home on that day, to allow them to have a normal workday, for them to be able to leave without any disruption, to get home before the festival starts. The amount of planning and thought that goes into the festival with the NCTA, they have, they think not just about actual vehicle traffic and about local businesses, but they also think about foot traffic and the flow of that and how we are directing people so that you're not bottlenecking them, so that they allow, so the festival, while very full, does not feel claustrophobic. They also consider businesses outside the footprint, something that we saw in Greensboro is, you know, they had all these people coming and businesses within the footprint benefited greatly and businesses outside felt neglected. So one of the things that they did was they offered artists and staff script tickets to buy food and goods outside the footprint. They connected with local businesses saying, "Look, we want our staff and our artists and our visitors to go outside to experience the whole city." And they connected with businesses that were willing to say, "Okay, each script ticket will be a dollar and we'll redeem those after the festival." So that got people outside of the footprint, much like when we went to visit, when we went out to dinner, when we went out to drinks, we explored the city. Same thing goes for Richmond. And talking about the impact of all those people coming into town that weekend, with Dover, it's very centrally located and they've got, you know, the room capacity, you have people camping. We have the entire Delmarva Peninsula that's going to allow people, not everyone's going to be able to stay in Salisbury, but maybe they'll get to accidentally discover Snow Hill or accidentally get to discover Berlin or accidentally discover these other outside areas that will benefit from this, from the lodging, from food, from gas, from shopping that these other towns have. And so it's not a cramped, it's not a, it's not a cramped festival. There are a lot of people, but we have a lot of support from the entire Delmarva Peninsula and we're very excited for people to come and see what the Delmarva Peninsula has to offer.
You keep mentioning Greensboro and Richmond. What's the populations of those two cities?
Greensboro is about 10 times the size of us, around 300,000. Richmond, I'm not quite sure. We asked those questions when we went down there. We said, "Well, this town..."
Richmond's about twice the size of Greensboro.
Okay, very big. But we were, we said, "Well, this town's so large and they've got all these resources. How are we going to do it?" Well, you have Bangor, Maine, which is about the same size as Salisbury, much more remote than we are, not as connected like we are to all these Philadelphia and DC and whatnot. Their first year, they were able to have 80,000 people come to that event. And it's only grown since then. They're able to handle it. They are excited to put their, their town on the national, in the national spotlight. The pride that the community felt in pulling off this event spills over into other areas and has only helped that town grow and become even more successful than before.
Oh. I would say, first of all, congratulations on taking the initiative.
Thank you.
I think it's almost shocking that you've gotten so much support, as you have, from the state level as well with the funding and in-kind contributions. That's, that's, that's not, that's no easy task.
The state's been incredible.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Did you find out that as far as the city was concerned, that you had to adjust your budget, your annual budget to allow for this?
Yes. And I don't think I mentioned our cash contribution. We've also, like the state, putting in $100,000. We've committed $100,000 per year. So there is a direct budgetary impact in addition to the overtime expenses associated with manning, you know, all of the police requirements, all of the fire and EMS requirements and field operations, public works requirements associated with an event like this. So yes, there is a, there is a direct impact, especially since the festival is not paying the city for any of this. It's all being given to the festival gratis.
I guess my question to you would be, because I think that the county should be on board with this equally, I really do. The state of Maryland has committed to this. So if it's important to the state of Maryland, it's certainly as important to Wycomico County even more so. And you've taken the initiative. I think it's important for the county to, you know, work with you on it, of course, that's why we're meeting today. So I guess my question would be, if you have any idea of knowing what to anticipate as far as what the county...
uh, what to anticipate as far as what the county is, is required of the county, and if there's, through your experience, with the experience of those you've talked with, if they have any idea of what time commitments are really involved and what expenses are involved, even in in-kind contributions?
Sure. Um, I, I think, uh...
This, this would apply to both, both the marathon and the festival.
Right, and, and Caroline can speak to some of the details, and Jason can, of course, too, when we get to the marathon.
Okay.
But, you know, I think there's, there's multiple opportunities. Um, you know, we, we've tried to give some thought to that. We anticipated that anything beyond what the city had committed and, and, and the state had pre- committed prior to finalizing budgets, um, you know, would cost both events. Um, so, you know, we, we are prepared to pay for anybody who provides those services, whether it's Wycomico County, Town of Ocean City, Worcester County, neighbors, you know, friends, whatever, Fruitland, Delmar. But, uh, of course, those relationships and, and recognizing that these are community events that, that benefit, um, not only the city of Salisbury, uh, but have a, a direct economic impact for, of course, Wycomico County and some of those outlying areas, especially with the National Folk Festival. We would love and welcome the opportunity to present a united front, um, and say, "Look, we're all in this together." You know, county, city, state, uh, business community, philanthropic community. So some of those, um, some of those things that, uh, we will have to figure out, um, include, uh, additional traffic control, additional public safety, uh, provision, additional, uh, EMS support, um, for both events. Uh, they have a different, uh, footprint when it comes to, uh, EMS impact. They have a different footprint when it comes to public safety impact. Uh, when we met with GPD in Greensboro, uh, you know, they had forty officers around the table, because they've got seven hundred and twenty-five police officers, and so they could send forty officers to a meeting. And they had forty officers, and, you know, we're sitting there with our checklist of every possible terrorist threat and thing that could go wrong in a large crowd, and they're saying, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, wait a minute. Let us tell you what our experience has been. This is the calmest, best thing you're gonna have to deal with in the course of every given year." Uh, and here's what our experience has been. We had, you know, one domestic, uh, uh, incident where we had to separate husband and wife in two thousand and fourteen, and, you know, we haven't had any incidents other than that. We're not dealing with drunken disorderly, we're not dealing with, you know, intoxication, we're not dealing with DUIs, we're not dealing with any of those things that often come along with a music festival. A typical music festival that might include more pop or modern music. So, so those, uh, those things are obviously critical. Traffic control is gonna be very important, especially for the marathon. The National Folk Fest- Festival's a little different, because we don't want vehicles interacting with, uh, the inside of the festival footprint at all. They have a, a system that they have designed and will be adopting, which is, uh, reliant on golf carts and bicycles and, um, you know, even EMS on bike and, um, you know, gators, uh, essentially, uh, things like that inside the festival footprint. Otherwise, from thirteen to fifty to mil to, you know, carol, you will see no vehicles on the inside of that footprint. Um, so, uh, obviously, there's multiple things that I think, um, the county could, uh, participate in and support.
Right.
Um, that have tremendous value, tremendous value to, uh, both of these events. And, and I would just add, on traffic control, it's not just people. Uh, the signs, the message boards are always helpful. Uh, we have a couple of those, the state has a couple of those, but I, I think the county has some of those as well. And if those sorts of things could be incorporated into the planning process, um, that would just be a huge help to us. Jersey barriers and things like that.
Have you talked to our sheriff and our county executive? What, you know, what, what kind of response are we getting from them?
Great response. Um, we've, we've started to put some of these things on paper, uh, in meeting with the county executive's office, um, and in meeting with, uh, the sheriff's deputies. Uh, Lieutenant Robinson has represented the sheriff in those meetings. Um, the, uh, in both cases, uh, for both events, separate meetings, but, um, you know, we're, we're trying to come up with this list of things that the county could, um, could help support with, and, uh, we're in the early stages of developing that. I think for this meeting, we prepared a, Julia prepared a memorandum that had some of those things identified.
How about the volunteer fire departments in the outlying areas?
Absolutely.
Have you contacted them?
Absolutely. Yes, so, um, we've worked through Dave Shipley. Um, Dave Shipley's office, uh, is gonna be, uh, coordinating requests to outside agencies. Um, we've also worked with Ocean City. Ocean City has its own, uh, emergency management system, um, and Ocean City has asked to bring their firefighters in to, to participate as volunteers. Um, and we'd love to keep it all local first, and, and if we needed, Ocean City to support after that, we could certainly do that.
The, the reason I asked you about the Salisbury budget and how you were planning for this was, do you anticipate the county itself will have to, um, consider expenses for this? Whether it's in kind or not, it's still expenses. Uh, when we prepare our budget for two thousand and eighteen, do you anticipate that we'll have to add line items to, um, different departments to account for maybe what the expenses might be?
Truly only if the county wants to do that. Um, you know, I don't think there's a budgetary impact on the expense side that's impl- implicit. On the revenue side, I would say there is. You know, there will be no doubt a change in revenue projections, um, associated with room tax and, and hopefully sales tax as well. Uh, just looking at the data from, uh, the Rehoboth Marathon, um, and the St. Michael's Running Festival, uh, those events, plus looking at Greensboro and other places, um, there, there's definitely a, a upside. Uh, that being said, on the expense side, some things to consider would be, what willingness is there to contribute, um, you know, overtime, sheriff's deputies' hours. And I understand that this, that may not be possible, and that's why in the budget, we've accounted for those things.
Okay.
For paying for, for those things, whether it came from the county or it came from Delmar or Fruitland or SUPD or wherever. But it's something that, it's certainly a way to contribute. I will say, it's been incredibly helpful already, just having, um, the tourism office and their expertise.
Right.
You know, both in the application process and since that time, in supporting with, you know, the, the bidding for host hotels, um, the, uh, uh, support for marketing, uh, in coordination with the state tourism office. State tourism office is integrally involved, and, um, the, the, the county tourism office being connected to that has been incredibly helpful.
Yeah, they're, they're good. John, do you have a question?
Yeah, and thanks for coming today, and I certainly appreciate, and certainly appreciate the update. You're talking about a hundred million dollars approximately, economic impact. Uh, are you on schedule at this point? We're only ten months away from this, and you, you consider yourself on schedule. It seems like with the event, that you're talking about an economic impact of that much, that, uh, you'd be, as far as locking down certain items, particularly with the county, from what I see. Do you have a representative from the county that sits on your, uh, team, uh, from county administration particularly?
Uh, we have, uh, Steve Miller is part of our executive committee, um, and, um, we have through our... I'm sorry.
The county executive's shaking his head now.
He's not.
Who talked, who talked to Steve?
Yes. Okay. All right, well, that's, I apologize.
He was appointed to the executive committee, and the, um, the request from our last meeting with the executive's office is that somebody from the executive office be invited to each of the meetings. Um, so, an invitation to each of the meetings has gone out recently, fundraising committee, uh, marketing committee, and...
And, and, and future, I know that we have a safety meeting coming up as well, so that there is representation from, uh, from the county, because when we met with, uh, with, uh, the county, uh, county office, we, you know, one thing that we stressed was, not only is this a Salisbury event, this is a Wycomico event, this is a Maryland event.
Sure.
This is Delmarva, and, um, uh, coming together, sharing information is, is incredibly important, because we may not, uh, know of a resource or, or an avenue to explore without sharing that information. So we're very open to doing that.
Yeah, so, uh, are the, planning for these two events on schedule? Absolutely. The same schedule that the National Folk Festival has been planned on every year that it's been hosted for seventy-seven years. Uh, we're on that same schedule. Um, one of the things that we personally, locally, have thought about, and I hope my friends at the NCTA won't mind me saying this, is that maybe their bid process should be two years out instead of one year out, but, um, but that's not up to me. Um, that's not up to me. But, that being said, you know, from a sponsorship, uh, acquisition, from a planning standpoint, you know, we're, we're exactly where we think we need to be at this time.
So you say in your willingness to pay, if we didn't budget that, the city would have money to pay our deputies overtime?
To pay someone overtime. It may not be Wycomico County Sheriff's deputies, but someone.
Okay.
It is in the budget, yes.
It's in your budget.
It could be sheriff's deputies, it could be Fruitland, it could be Delmar, it could be MSP.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would think that maybe if we, um, had a work session as, as a, with the executive's office and sat down and reviewed it, that would be great. Um, maybe the next meeting, or, or maybe to give everybody a little more time, maybe the second meeting in December, we could try to get together and then sort of evaluate. So I know we have, you know, the, the budget cycle, they'd need to get their information as far as what's needed and what the commitments are, and it's certainly gonna impact. I know Sheriff Lewis is gonna come in to the, you know, to present his budget, I'm sure he would wanna know exactly what his additional commitments might be.
Absolutely.
In real dollars and cents. So maybe in a month, hopefully, we can iron out some of the more specific requirements or, or, um, on the part of the county, and, and what you'd like to see.
Anytime you want us.
Okay, good.
We're there.
Good, good. We come to, we come to the city council if you guys invite us, we'll be glad to show up, but...
More than one.
Gotta talk to that guy.
Okay. Um, but go ahead. I know you wanna be out of here by eleven, you've got about ten minutes.
The, um, the marathon, I just wanted to mention, um, so, we, we expect, and I'm, I'll let Jason again, uh, give you details, but a thousand to thirteen hundred in year one, two hundred plus registered already without marketing. Um, we, it will begin in the city park, uh, run out toward, uh, southeast, toward the airport, come back through SU Tunnel, uh, southwest toward Tony Tank, and ends in downtown Salisbury. We've looked at economic impact of similar races in Rehoboth and St. Michael's, um, three point two million in new spending, eighty-five percent to eighty-eight percent non-local participants, um, uh, sixty-six jobs added to the Rehoboth economy, two million dollars in increased wages. Um, uh, St. Michael's raised two hundred and ninety thousand dollars last year for charity. Um, and, and this is a little different, in that the money doesn't stay with the festival. Um, the profits, uh, the proceeds of the marathon, um, go to athletes, serving athletes, and, uh, Life Crisis Center Pin Wheels for Protection. You may be familiar with the Pin Wheels for Protection 5K. That will be part of the Salisbury Running Festival. It'll be one of the three races, the 5K, the half marathon, the marathon. And so, the, the proceeds will be split between those two entities, um, with a, a small piece of that for the fiscal agent, which is Eastern Shore Running Club, for their management, um, role. The donations thus far, value of the donations, about ten percent from the city of what it is for the National Folk Festival, about twenty-seven thousand dollars in, uh, EMS, police, et cetera. And again, this is, uh, similar in that the city's not charging, uh, the festival or the marathon, the running festival, uh, anything. Uh, the state's not involved with the marathon, that's a purely a local and, uh, nonprofit-supporting event. Um, but I think, again, there's similar opportunities for the, um, marathon to be supported by the county if the county is so inclined. Similar benefits, economic impact, sales tax income, room tax income, um, things that the city doesn't receive directly, but our community does and the county and the state do. Um, so, from that standpoint, uh, again, traffic control, sheriff's deputies, um, signs, things like that have tremendous value and are anticipated in the budget similarly, um, in terms of compensation. But if, if there was a consideration, that would be a, an incredible, um, sign support.
So the, um, the proceeds, some of the pro- the proceeds don't go towards offsetting any of the expenses on the part of the city?
It's a don- those are donations from the city, so this, the city sort of, uh, as a sponsor, so to speak. Um, one way to, I should've mentioned, in both cases, um, the same consideration could be given to Wycomico County, and in fact, treatment as a sponsor, as a, you know, a, a sponsor at whatever level that donation came to.
Sure.
And being, you know, put on stages and, you know, T-shirts and marketing materials, things like that.
Yeah.
And the marketing for the, uh, the marathon, I'll let Jason talk about how that might work. On the marketing for the Folk Festival, um, certainly a lot of out-of-market marketing, uh, to Baltimore, Washington, Philadelphia, New York, Norfolk, and, um, uh, the, the marathon in running circles and in athlete circles, you tell them, "Not well-versed, I'm not a marathoner, this'll be my first."
You will.
Yeah, right, this'll be my first.
I think with the quality of life that you're in, you know, this brings the quality of life to the Eastern Shore area, and I, I think that's important. I think it's an economic, economic development driver. So I do think, I think it's important for the committee to be on, for the ca- the city to be committed to this, and it's important for the county to be committed to this. I, I, you know, you're talking about sponsorship, so I, I personally have a problem with that. I think it's a great idea.
And we agree. And admittedly, um, they'll be fun events and they'll be things that people enjoy, but ultimately, these are economic development initiatives.
Sure.
That's what this is all about.
Yeah, they, the idea behind the three different events, um, we've kind of kept everything to ourselves until we had everything lined up, um, and certified. So we, we actually have now the marathon and the half marathon course, our USA Track and Field certified courses, which to a non-runner means nothing. To a runner means, "I can qualify for Boston Marathon for this," which is gonna draw people from all over the country. We already have people from Michigan and Wisconsin that have signed up for it, because I posted the elevation profile the other day, and it's minus eleven feet. So I told him, "It's not a downhill run per se, but you will run down more than you'll run." Uh, this is a huge draw, and the fact that for the inaugural event, we're, we're locking everything at a hundred-dollar registration fee. So for a hundred dollars, you can qualify for the Boston Marathon. We went ahead and also, uh, made the half marathon a certified course as well, which allows people to use it to qualify for, like, New York Marathon and, and some smaller, but national events. So we're already getting a little bit of traction with that. Out of the two hundred people we have registered, thirteen are registered for the half marathon, because the draw is the marathon, is the Boston qualification, uh, certification. And that's huge. To tie in the 5K for the Pin Wheels for Protection, that, that's great for us, because we wanna keep all the money local. We don't want it to go into somebody's pocket per se. So we're splitting those proceeds directly between those two organizations, and we're using those organizations to go out and get sponsors, uh, from the community. Uh, we're looking at a total bill of everything of around a hundred thousand dollars puts on this event, and we're, we're looking to get sponsors to cover that, so that every registrant that comes in, that money equally goes out right to the actual beneficiaries, um, of the event. We've been going and doing videos now and doing posts, uh, the mayor recommend putting an ad in Runners World Magazine. We're in seventy-two different calendars across the country, um, and now we're gonna really start promoting. If anybody is a runner, there are local races, so there's the Rehoboth, uh, Marathon, which is coming up, but there's Coastal Delaware, which is the one that everybody around here used to use to be the Boston qualifier. The biggest difference is, one, we don't run on the sand any at all. We're on the road, which is big for a runner. But more importantly, we're doing this as a, an event that half marathoners and marathoners can intermingle. They're actually together for ten point eight miles, the exact same ten point eight miles, which is very different than any other run around here, where as soon as you say "go," you split. Yeah, well, so we're also, we're making this an elite run by having Boston qualification and everything, but we're also opening up to the first-time runners, and that's where we get into the community health aspect. We're gonna do an eight-hour cutoff for the full marathon, and that makes a long day for our deputies and for our traffic control, but we've taken that into account on the budget. But eight hours, which means you can go at a sixteen-minute and thirty-second pace the entire time and actually complete this event. So the mayor's gonna do it.
Oh, boy. In full gear, in full, what do they call that?
That's it. Um, we're all, we're really, really excited about it, and we're actually getting ready to have a big stakeholders meeting, um, in about two weeks, because we wanted to make sure everything was, was ironed out. We met with County Roads, uh, yesterday. We're taking some of their suggestions, we're trying to work with them, working with the sheriff's office, so we're starting to bring everybody kind of into the fold. But I would have much rather have all the details out before we bring everybody in, and that's why we're here today.
Great. John, do you have a question?
Yeah. Uh, is there a possibility you could limit the number of participants in this event?
Absolutely, yes.
Uh, and what would your cutoff be?
Um, around two thousand is a decent infrastructure for the first year, and that's across the board. So that's including the 5K. Um, I, I really think we're gonna look around maybe twelve to fifteen hundred for the half marathon, marathon. Um, the numbers that I put in the budget are, are low, like, I'm almost guaranteeing that we're gonna get those. The 5Ks, because it benefits, um, you could see upwards of five or six hundred people. Uh, we're working some turkey trucks coming up this Thursday that are eight hundred to a thousand people, so you never know, and when they get behind the, the calls of it.
So this isn't your first rodeo, Danny?
This is not my first rodeo, I said.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I think on the, the route, there was one suggestion that maybe it could go down through Parsonsburg in front of Joe Holloway's store.
I didn't make that request.
That was the porta-john.
Only if they can tote furniture while they run.
Joe, you'd have bottles out there for five dollars a piece or something. But, no, this, we really thank you, uh, and really, uh, for taking the initiative to begin with. I mean, that's, this is fantastic, take on something this magnitude on both events. And it's gonna be so, I think it's gonna be so great for the city and for the county. So, um, you know, we're, we, you know, really appreciate the fact you spent the time today, took the time to be here and explain it with us. Um, how do you think we should progress with this? Should it be every quarter or every two months? What do you think the best way is for the, maybe the, and I know you're gonna be dealing with executives... with the Executive's Office as well, but, uh, anything you might suggest formally on a regular basis?
Well, I think, you know, not wanting to speak for the Executive's Office, but I think, you know, incorporating, uh, the county leadership from the executive side, um, in the fundraising and marketing, um, committees, uh, as well as, um, our planning meetings, um, will be helpful on a regular basis or on a, a high-frequency basis. Those groups meet, will meet very regularly.
We have, um, depending on the committee, uh, they meet between, uh, two, uh, times a month to once every three months. So it just depends on, on the committee.
All right, well, what will?
And then maybe quarterly, um, you know, come, we can have a conversation with council, perhaps.
Okay, however you might want to do. I mean, we could, um, we would schedule the worst sessions anyway, because I think it's important to, to keep, you know, we, we're certainly interested in this morning, keep ahead of it. And at that time, uh, we would invite any representatives you might choose. It could be you, it could be Jack, uh, it could be whoever may want to come to the table at, during that work session, okay?
Okay, yes, sir.
You or staff, it doesn't, you know, however you want to break it down.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, they're, they're fully capable. Um, I wanted to make sure, you know, I was here to answer questions as well, but, I mean, they can, uh, Jason and Caroline can handle this from here on out, and I'll, I'll sit in the back and be quiet.
If you're going to come, if you're going to come, you deserve to be right here.
No, I, I appreciate it. We appreciate the conversation. Um, you know, uh, obviously, you know, this is a community lift. Um, you know, the city's taken some, a lead role in, in pushing both of these events and in, um, hosting these events, uh, and in making some contributions, but, uh, but ultimately, the benefit is, is really much broader than, um, municipal government. This is about our community. So I think any way we can have the county on board will be a huge benefit to all of us.
Great, good. Any other?
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Oh, and there's some maps behind me.
The next item for business is Resolution Number One Forty-Five, Two Thousand and Seventeen, approving the bylaws for the Wycomico Partnership for Families and Children, and we have Lisa Campbell, Director of the Wycomico Partnership for Families and Children here.
Okay. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution One Forty-Five, Two Thousand Seventeen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Are there any questions in particular that, uh, council would like to ask, uh, Mrs. Campbell?
Do you want to give us just a overview, maybe?
Good morning.
Just state your name and position for the, the audience, the five fourteen.
Lisa Campbell, the Director of the Local Management Board.
Great.
So basically, this is some housekeeping for the bylaws, um, just to, um, clean up some of the language and make it more simple and more clear, in accordance with, we do follow, um, other, uh, Local Management Board bylaws, but, uh, most importantly, the Maryland nonprofits examples as well. So it's very simple and clean. I think, um, Mr. Leslie sent, uh, some clarifications. I don't know if that was passed on, where there were basically just four simple cleanups, so that the, um, appointment of, of all board members will be recommended by the director and the board together, um, in accordance to how we're already practicing, and we give that recommendation to the county Executive's Office, um, and then from there to county council. Uh, for chairs, the chair terms, we just wanted to make that very clear, too, so that chair terms will be three-year terms, um, as recommended by the director and the board, and then they can, under special circumstances, um, take on another year role. If there's a change in, we wanted to make sure if there was a change in, um, the director position and, uh, maybe several new, uh, board members at the same time, we would like to have an overlap with people who have historical information and experience about the Local Management Board. Um, and then with vice chairs, the vice chairs will serve one term, um, and can do up to three terms total. I mean, three years, excuse me, three years total. Uh, and then the chair will simply set the meeting dates at the beginning of the fiscal year, so that all board members will know what to expect for regularly scheduled, uh, Local Management Board meetings.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution One Forty-Five, Two Thousand Seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Thank you.
I will stand.
Okay.
The next five resolutions are appointments to the Wycomico County Local Management Board. The Local Management Board is a structure for the county to implement and maintain an efficient system of services for children, adolescents, and families, starting with Resolution Number One Forty-Six, Two Thousand Seventeen, confirming the reappointment of Paula M. Erdy to the Wycomico County Local Management Board.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution One Forty-Six, Two Thousand Seventeen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Sorry. Um, we have an aye, second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number One Forty-Seven, Two Thousand Seventeen, confirming the reappointment of Nalsetta V. Walters Jones, Ph.D., to the Wycomico County Local Management Board.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution One Forty-Seven, Two Thousand Seventeen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number One Forty-Eight, Two Thousand Seventeen, confirming the appointment of Nicole Griffin Winder to the Wycomico County Local Management Board.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution One Forty-Eight, Two Thousand Seventeen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number One Forty-Nine, Two Thousand Seventeen, confirming the appointment of Nathaniel Sansom to the Wycomico County Local Management Board.
Entertained a po, entertained a motion to approve Resolution One Forty-Nine, Two Thousand Seventeen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number One Fifty, Two Thousand Seventeen, confirming the appointment of Thelonious Williams to the Wycomico County Local Management Board.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution One Fifty, Two Thousand Seventeen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next, we have Resolution Number One Fifty-One, Two Thousand Seventeen, approving Thomas J. Mace Esquire, Sandra K. Martin, and M. Douglas Rayfield as nominees to be sent to the governor in accordance with state law, to be considered for appointment to the Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board. The Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board hears appeals from property owners who disagree with the values assessed by the State Department of Assessments and Taxations. They also hear appeals on local tax credits, special taxing areas under the Homeowners Tax Credit Program, the Renters Tax Credit Program, and the Agriculture Preservation Easement Program, and other tax matters that are assigned to the board for hearing.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution One Fifty-One, Two Thousand Seventeen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, the chair abstains.
Resolution, next, we have Resolution Number One Fifty-Two, Two Thousand Seventeen, confirming the appointment of Kathy Jo. Williams to the Animal Appeal Board. The Animal Appeal Board makes advisory recommendations regarding changes, implementations, and administration of the animal control laws of the county. They also make recommendations concerning a schedule of fines, and they hear and decide appeals from determinations concerning the classification of an animal as dangerous.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution One Fifty-Two, Two Thousand Seventeen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number One Fifty-Three, Two, Two Thousand Seventeen, confirming the reappointment of Michelle R. Miles to the Wycomico County Personnel Board.
Entertained a motion, sorry.
Personnel Board serves as a formal grievance review board to hear and decide appeals from any personnel actions. They also advise county officials on matters concerning the personnel rules and regulations, and report to the county executive and the county council on the operation of the personnel system.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution One Fifty-Three, Two Thousand Seventeen.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number One Fifty-four, Two Thousand Seventeen, confirming the appointment of Heather Sammis as Director for the Wycomico County Nursing Home.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution One Fifty-four, Two Thousand Seventeen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
The next item for business is Resolution Number One Fifty-Five, Two Thousand Seventeen, to authorize the county executive to accept a grant award from the governor's office for children in the amount of thirty-five thousand for a local care team coordinator.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution One Fifty-Five, Two Thousand Seventeen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Good morning again.
Good morning again. So the local, um, do you want me to just start talking about it?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 you, you go right along. You're fine.
The local, um, local coordinating council, or, yeah, LC, LC, local coordinate, they've changed it over the years. LCT, LCC, you know how those with acronyms, but, um, this is an inter-agency case management team, where, uh, we try to reduce, first of all, out-of-state, um, placements, but any out-of-home placements for, um, youth that need some extra care. So now we will, um, be in compliance with the law, all the local management boards, um, because if, effective January first, uh, we will, um, take on the, um, local care team, was administrative responsibilities, to coordinate all resources in the county for any of our, um, child placement or potentially, um, child placement, um, activities, and making sure that they are accessing everything that they can hear locally first, and, um, because we do know that there's a lot of more harm that's done taking a child out of home than keeping them in home, if we can help support that. So that's what this grant will be, um, going forward, because it's for permanent, um, staffing. And, um, so not only will the, it's going to be seventy thousand dollars for a whole year. This is just for the last half of the fiscal year, the thirty-five thousand dollars. So it will be for, um, for salaries, um, as well as creating all of the, whatever we need administratively to, um, have our resources together and coordinate whatever else we may need for training and, um, technical assistance to any of our, uh, child and family-serving agencies that we partner with now.
Questions from council? The, is, is it a one-year grant?
It, it will be annually, yes, one year.
So will it be, do you anticipate it being renewed every year? Because, you know, so many people are, are wary of a grant that lasts one year, and then after that, all of a sudden, they're being asked to add another staff member in the county budget. But do you think this is something that is continued, was a continuous commitment on the part of the state?
Yes. So that's, it's come from the children's cabinet, and all of the secretaries of all of governors, um, cabinets have come together to, um, as a team to support what we're going to do with this local care team.
Okay.
And it's, and it's not thirty-five thousand, it's seventy thousand, actually, right? This is just the last half of this year.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution One Fifty-Five, Two Thousand Seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you again.
Next, we have Resolution Number One Fifty-Six, Two Thousand Seventeen, to authorize the county executive to accept a grant award from the Maryland Department of Environment in the amount fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars for the Nanicoke River Watershed Management Plan Project in Dallas Baker's here. If there are any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution One Fifty-Six, Two Thousand Seventeen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Baker, have a question?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Hey, good morning. Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works.
So shortly before Dallas came on board, um, as Public Works Director, uh, Public Works submitted a grant application, um, to study a watershed, uh, within the county. Back then, I guess all our recent conversations as of late have been about stormwater flooding. Um, back then, the thought was more in terms of trying to, which we still have to meet our, our WIP obligations in trying to clean the bay. So the purpose of this study, um, primarily, it is to look at the Nanicoke River watershed, um, within Wycomico County, so that's every portion of Wycomico County that drains to the Nanicoke and its tributaries. And what the study will, uh, do in essence is propose locations to install WIP projects. Um, we have initially, um, through planning and zoning and Public Works, been looking at publicly-owned areas, uh, and proposing WIP projects. This sort of formalizes the process, and we'll hopefully have a list. Um, when the Nanicoke River watershed study's complete, we would then look at, um, the Wycomico River, possibly breaking it up into two sections since it's so large, uh, within Wycomico, and then there's the Pokamoke-Nassawango, um, uh, watersheds as well that we would study. One of the important things to note about the WIP projects, the majority of the grant money out there is for quality purposes, cleaning up the bay, and what we aim to do is for each of these projects also look at flood reduction options as well. So how can we, um, when, when designing these WIP projects, include a flood reduction element? So, so there is that to consider as well. Um, with that, um, this is, I guess, the, we applied for this grant some time ago, but it was questionable whether or not we would get the funds as, um, the EPA is funneling money through MDE, and the funds were questioned, um, with the, um, current cuts to the EPA. So they confirmed recently that the money's available, and we're coming before you to accept this grant money.
Um, how do you work with, I mean, obviously, the Nanicoke River, you know, includes Dorchester County, the watershed, you know, includes, um, you know, Delaware. You know, I talked to folks in Sharp Town or Riverton, and they say, you know, the problems that, you know, the river up on their end isn't from Maryland, you know, it's from Wycomico County, it's coming from Delaware. I mean, so how, you know, we can do so much from Wycomico County, we should do what we can, but how do we coordinate, or, you know, do you, are there efforts to coordinate with other states about this sort of stuff when a river like that is, you know, you know, problems coming into Wycomico County from like Delaware?
Yes. Um, that's a, that's a great question. In terms of the bay cleanup effort, there is a Chesapeake Bay program, um, which is a federal, uh, level program that includes representatives from, um, each of the states and scientists from each of the states. So in terms of our goal, uh, from Wycomico County standpoint, is we want to make sure our house is in order. Um, there is a Delaware portion, a significant Delaware portion. We, we found that out with Barron Creek. Um, Barron Creek drains to the Nanicoke, and that was also the, I guess, impetus behind looking at the Nanicoke at the time first. Uh, we, we really need to look at all, um, parts of the county for WIP projects, and at the time, we, we just decided we had to start somewhere. So we started with the Nanicoke. And what we learned with Barron Creek was over half of the ten thousand, eight hundred acres that drain to that dam, uh, over half was in Delaware, completely outside of county control. So, so there is a Chesapeake Bay program looking at that from a quality standpoint. Um, if there's, if there's other issues, I, it's, it's really at a state-to-state level, um, and we can express our concerns up the chain if, uh, if we have issues and, um, so forth.
But there's no coordination between like Sussex County and Wycomico County on this sort of stuff?
Not, not at this level. Um, I will say that there is one group, um, the Nanicoke Watershed Alliance, a nonprofit that works with businesses and, um, citizens in the Nanicoke River watershed. They're reaching out and doing educational efforts in, um, all parts of the watershed, and ideally, we would, um, with these projects as, as they go forward and, and get implemented, see improvements on our tributaries draining to the Nanicoke where they do, where they do testing of that.
How long will the study take?
Um, I'm thinking four to six months, depending on the field where, and, um, you know, the, the data they have available, but...
Is it easily dependent on when the study has to be done?
Typically not. Um, you know, we're, we're always going to prioritize public areas first, and where we have a series of roadside ditches, trying to take credit for those, because right now, you know, that, that's something that, i- is there anything we can do to, uh, get credit with minimal investment from the county, one. Two, um, you know, we focus on the public area so that we're not having to buy property or, or acquire property. But three, it is where are our hotspots with flooding, and can we put something that can both deal with at least rainfall flooding? Title flooding, again, is a different, different beast altogether and, um, harder to address. So, um, yeah, it's, it's something that they'll come to us with their suggestions, and we will work with them. Dallas and his staff will, will work with them to try to make sure they're, they're reasonable, because it's, it's too easy... because it's, it's too easy for somebody to design a multimillion-dollar project that just isn't worth the, um, worth the investment in terms of it, it doesn't actually remove that much. And the, the other thing that's actually really beneficial about these watershed studies, and I've done several in previous jobs, where you can rank the projects based on the cost per pound removed. And when I say pound, I mean nitrogen, phosphorus, sediment, the, the contaminants that, um, we're trying to limit from reaching the bay. So, we could then go before you and say, "Look, we're proposing this project, because for every dollar you put in, it, it removes nitrogen and phosphorus far cheaper than some of these other alternatives before us." So, it's, uh, it helps us formalize where we're putting these WIP projects, and this, this specific grant, um, is focused on the Nanacoque River watershed.
Joe?
How many different watersheds do we have in Wycomico County?
Three main ones. Nanacoque, Wycomico, and Pokamoke. We throw in Nassawongo, because it's, it's, um, viewed slightly differently.
And when you look at them, do you look at them at a bird's-eye view, uh, when you're, all three of them together? Or you just look at them on an individual basis?
Typically, we, we've not been looking at them at all. We've been looking countywide without any consideration. From a bay cleanup effort, we have what is called a waste load allocation. The, the whole bay cleanup effort is modeled after water and wastewater treatment. So, the TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Load, waste load allocation, WLA, those are typically, you are not allowed to discharge more than this amount of arsenic from, or, or have X amount of chlorine in drinking water, and then they'll break it down into parts per billion. We have goals set for the Nanacoque River. We have goals set for the Wycomico River. We have goals set for the Pokamoke-Nassawongo area, so...
They haven't been, they haven't been combined, or...
No, and if we put all our projects in the Nanacoque River watershed, we would not meet our WIP goals.
Okay.
So, so we need to look at each of those watersheds and propose projects for...
Now, when, when you look at those, do you also look at the stormwater and flooding issue, which has become a more current issue? And could you combine that in your watershed, uh, maps or, uh, in your, uh, what you're doing here? And also the tax ditches, which have to do with the flooding also. So, again, you get an overall view of the, of the problems and what we need to solve with the three different items. And I think, and stop me if I'm wrong, but I think those are the major issues that we have in Wycomico County, as far as WIP projects, as far as flooding goes, and as far as flood control goes.
Yes, so, so I'll tell you, from the funding of the grant, it is water quality, where are you putting these projects? However, as, as I said previously, we do look at how do we reduce flooding in that area? How do we build capacity? And sometimes, by building capacity, you get more treatment credit. So, it's sort of a, a net positive. The more, the more, um, I, I guess, in an extreme example, and we'll take the city of Salisbury, when a drop of rain falls, it goes right into a pipe and right to the river. By allowing it time to infiltrate into the ground, and with heavy rainfalls, you tend to get a deluge where it's all running right to the river, very little time for it to get absorbed into the ground, you lack treatment for that. So, by putting in practices that kind of, um, delay the water from going where it's going by putting in a pond, or, you know, as a pond example, it has time to infiltrate into the ground before reaching the river.
So, so what you're saying is, by putting all three of these components together, you dilute the pool and make it more difficult to, uh, obtain resources for... So, you're better off not, not combining them and looking at a big picture, but keeping them in smaller parts and, and working on them as a mind?
No, well, you know, it's, it's, um, the grant money's for cleaning up the bay.
Right.
And we are gonna propose projects that clean up the bay and stop flooding.
I understand.
So, that's where we're, you know, i- if we're torn between two projects, one that cleans the bay, and that's all it does, and one that cleans the bay and provides flood reduction, you know which one we're gonna go for, because this is gonna have the crowd support. And that's, um, you know, again, this, this study is to help us formalize our process, so we're not shooting in the dark. We're not just saying, "Hey, let's put another one out at Pemberton Historical Park, because we own it, and, you know, Wreckin' Parks hasn't complained about the maintenance yet." So, so this is to formalize it. This is to, hopefully, in conjunction with the, um, water quality testing that goes on in the Nanacoque River now, showing quantifiable results. And, um, once, once we have the Nanacoque River watershed plan, we're gonna apply for grant money to do, um, you know, Wycomico. We may wanna break it up into two areas. One focuses more on the urbanized areas, one focuses more on the rural areas. We could possibly partner with the city of Salisbury on that as well, um, if we wanna tackle the urbanized, since it's mostly, mostly them and Fruitland.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 156, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Next is Resolution Number 157, 2017, to approve a cash advance of funds to the Wycomico Public Library Account Receivable Number in amount up to $145,000, and to authorize the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement on behalf of Wycomico County, Maryland, with the Wycomico Public Library. And Mr. Wayne Strasberg, Director of Administration, is here, if there are any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 157, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Any questions for Mr. Strasberg? All those in favor of Resolution 157, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 159, 2017, to authorize the county executive to accept a donation of property from Conley Mill Associates, LLP, consisting of 234.67 acres, more or less, located on the southerly side of Conley Mill Road, adjacent to the Henry S. Atlantic Complex.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 159, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, the second. Any, any discussion? I know we've had a, a couple of work sessions on this.
We've got some questions.
Okay. Thank you, Weston. Joe?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, at the last meeting, you said you were gonna provide a, um, environmental study.
Yes, we, um, we, we started that process. So, there, it's underway. They were out in the field yesterday, doing field reconnaissance. And they're also doing title research. What information we had on, on the deed and, and the various, um, property changing hands over time has been given to them. Uh, we, we do not have results from that yet.
Okay. What phase are you, what kind of phase?
It's a Phase 1, just...
Well, Phase 1 is just a walk-around and a, um...
Title.
Title search.
Yes.
You know, this was a burrow pit. Okay? Now, when we were talking about Morris Mill a few years ago, I remember this subject come up, that there was possibility that contamination came from an abandoned burrow pit, that we didn't know about. And we never knew where it came from.
Yeah, it wasn't determined.
I'm not blaming it on a buried, okay.
Understood.
But that was part of the conversation. So, I don't think a Phase 1 is far enough, when you've got a, a formal, basically industrial site that, um, could be a possibility.
No, you're, you're correct. The, the Phase 1 is, is, a- as the number indicates, the first, the first step. You don't typically jump to a Phase 2 unless there's a disconcerting thing found within the, within the Phase 1. Now, we could still perform that, just to see if we're dealing with anything, and, and it, it may benefit the county. Typically, the Phase 1 helps narrow down what are the areas you are looking to test. Just so, i- if you had to do soil samples all over a 200-acre site, you know, you'd be $100,000 easily. If we focus purely to the pit areas and just seeing, "Hey, is there anything there? Um, any sources of hydrocarbons?" You know, it, it was a property that was zoned industrial. The pits were dug as stormwater ponds, but to help build the bypass. The question is, were, was there any industrial facilities nearby that could have been discharging something onto the site? We'll, we'll have to...
People dumping stuff there?
Or, or people dumping stuff there.
Um, I'd like to move that we table this until we get an environmental study done.
It's motion to table, second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
If you could, um, give me a shot of hands, guys. Those in favor of tabling it?
Tabling it.
Those in favor? We have four votes to table this. Hang on a second. Resolution has been tabled.
I would suggest, I was gonna say, Phase 2 studies. I don't want to be in the middle of a debate.
Oh, I, I agree, it's just not gonna...
If I could finish, uh, the motion has been to table this resolution. It would be brought back at our next meeting for the Wycomico County Council.
December 5th?
December 5th, thank you. Motion's tabled. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is it possible to get, uh, some ideas of what kind of recreational purposes?
Yeah, well, I can send you the presentation we gave to council and, and that.
Will it be strictly limited to that?
Yes.
I would suggest, um, we're, we're off the subject now. Between Joe, between you and those that tabled it, please express your concerns to Laura Hurley, Mrs. Hurley, so that she can then transfer that to Mr. Strasberg, so that we can see exactly what, uh, what questions you do have and what, what answers you'd like to, uh, to see before it comes back again.
We need an environmental study done on at least the burrow pit area.
I understand.
I made it pretty clear.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Hurley?
Uh, that's all I have at this time.
All right.
Or maybe at least the city would like to use it.
This time, entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session, so that we can, uh, convene at the Urban Services Commission. Second? All those in favor? Opposed? We're now convened as the Urban Services Commission.
Okay, before the Urban Services Commission, we have Resolution Number 02, 2017, to establish a urban service district for street lighting in the Burn Branch acre subdivision. The urban service district has held two public hearings on the proposed street lighting district. There were four options presented to the residents, with the majority of the, of the responses received being in favor of the LED and fiberglass pole option. The resolution was tabled at the last meeting, as we didn't have the contract, um, with Choptech, Choptech Electric available at that time. And we have Mr. Dallas Baker here to go over the next steps.
Okay. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 02, 2017. Second?
Second.
Discussion. Morning, Mr. Baker.
Morning, yeah.
Got things tied down a little?
Yeah, so we, you got, since we spoke last time, Choptech has forwarded us over the, um, the revised res, the revised agreement specifying the fiberglass poles, the LED lights. Right now, the tariff for the LED lights and the fiberglass poles are both being presented to the Maryland Public Service, or Board Public Works, for finalization. And speaking with Choptech, they don't think those dollar figures will be, um, finalized until April at the earliest. They said unless things get bogged down, which it could place it until July. Their proposal was to bill at the li- rate for the sodium lighting, which was less than the LED lighting. The LED lighting, that, the, the cost that was originally included in the letter that went out to residents, was the high-end estimate for what it would cost for the LED poles, so we're not anticipating those for the LED lights. So, we're not anticipating that cost to be higher than what was proposed. But, uh, it's my understanding that we want to, uh, to table that until we actually get the, those figures finalized. It's also, there's three, there's a three-to-four-month, uh, lag time to construct the fiberglass poles. So, even if it was approved today, you would see construction starting out there for potentially another three to four months.
So, you're saying bill at what rate?
At the, at the, the rate for the sodium lighting, the, the high-pressure sodium, which is less than the rate for the LEDs. I might have said that the other way around, hold on.
Is, is this coming from the homeowners? Is it their request?
No, that's, my understanding was the, was, was the Urban Service Commission's request.
That's off the Urban Service. We just wanted to make sure that whatever the, um, whatever the homeowners wanted, that we knew specifically what they were, what they were requesting.
I was, I was misinformed.
Am I wrong or not? I mean, I...
But you wanted it written in the resolution, what coverage it was gonna be?
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that it was established very clear as to what the decision was, but it's still a decision from the homeowners.
Yes, correct. Correct, and, and it is. The, the agreement covers, the agreement covers the LED lights and the fiberglass poles.
I thought you said, though, that...
But it's just being billed at the rate of the high-pressure sodians.
Correct.
Because they don't know that yet, right?
Exactly, they don't, they don't have the information.
So, this just, the only difference from last time is that it's spelled out what, what we were going to agree to last time is just spelled out this time. There's not any change, is that correct?
Correct, all, all they've done is remove the options from the agreement to, for the wooden poles and for the high-pressure sodium lighting.
Okay.
Mr. Cannon, can I ask a question?
Yes.
When they ha- when they have their final tariff, Dallas,
When they have their final tariff, Dallas, will that be good for the entire initial period of the urban services?
Yes.
So it won't be any chance of any increase during that term?
Correct. Any other questions from council? I see none. All those in favor of Resolution 02-2017, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. This time, entertain a motion to adjourn as the Urban Services Commission, so that we can reconvene as the Wycomico County Council. Second? All those in favor? Opposed? We're now reconvened as the Wycomico County Council. Mr. Roser, good morning.
Yes, good morning. If I may, I have an introduction to make.
Okay, certainly.
Good morning. My name is Steve Roser. I'm your internal auditor. I would like to introduce Levin Hitchens. He has come on board as our new assistant internal auditor as of 11/9. He has an extensive background in finance and information technology. He's already hit the ground running, and we welcome him aboard.
Thank you, Levin.
And he is informing, he does not want to make a speech.
Thank you, Mr. Roser. Congratulations, Mr. Hitchens.
If I may, I'll call your attention to Resolution 160-2017 concerning the cellphone audit report.
Entertain a motion to approve the Resolution 160-2017. Second?
Second.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
The Office of the Internal Auditor performed an audit of county telecommunications. The focus of this exercise was to evaluate county cellphones. Objectives were to determine the current population of cellphones and evaluate usage. The scope of the audit was August 2017. The county currently has 295 individual lines containing approximately 127 voice, 168 data lines, at a monthly cost of $12,590, including $537 in equipment purchases. We concluded that the cellphone existence and usage were satisfactory on our familiar three-point scale. And additionally, we enumerated several findings. The audit report contains additional information and will be posted on the county website in the usual manner if approved. Special thanks go to Purchasing Department and all departments for their help with this project. Respectfully submitted, Steve Roser, CPA, and I will be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, council?
Yeah, it says one phone line incurred usage charges of over $400, and they're looking into that. I mean, is there any more details on that?
Yes, there is. We questioned that, and it was investigated by the Purchasing Department. We had a phone line at the airport that was billed incorrectly. It was billed for data usage at zero. In other words, they were being billed for all their data instead of on the plan that the county has. That has now been switched back, and it is on the plan that we have for the county, and that will no longer take place, and we'll verify that on the follow-up.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 160-2017, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next, I'd like to call your attention to Resolution 161-2017.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 161-2017. Second? Thank you, Mr. Roser.
This concerns the 2017 annual report. The Office of the Internal Auditor for Wycomico County would like to submit a progress report for my seventh year in office. Your internal auditor would like to thank the county council once again for the opportunity to serve Wycomico County in this capacity. I would also like to thank Executive Bob Culver, council administrators Matt Kramer and Laura Hurley, and the Wycomico County Audit Committee for their invaluable support during the past year. Additional thanks go to department heads, county accounting professionals, and all other associates within the county and the state of Maryland who have been supportive in their interest and openness when it comes to addressing various county issues. Any success we enjoy as auditor and audit committee is directly attributable to the people who make Wycomico County succeed. Everything we do is designed to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of Wycomico County. We completed five audit projects in the past year, including concessions, paving, and payroll. Scope and objectives for audit underway and other planned projects can be found in the FY 2017 annual audit plan. Many of our completed projects require follow-ups. Subsequent work on many of these audits is just as important and time-consuming as the audit itself. We performed additional work on numerous completed projects. This office also assisted in requests for assistance, along with several investigations involving various factions of the county on a variety of subjects. Additionally, we completed numerous reports and projects for the benefit of the Office of the Internal Auditor, County Council, and the County Executive. The Office of the Internal Auditor would like to thank all those who participated in various projects undertaken, the quality of relationships previously developed with council, senior management, and county associates, and the spirit of cooperation for the betterment of Wycomico County. An effort to improve efficiency and effectiveness was further developed to everyone's benefit. And once again, I hope that all stakeholders view any small contributions this office made in the past year favorably, respectively, respectfully submitted, Steve Roser, CPA, internal auditor.
Questions from council? Busy year, Mr. Roser. We appreciate what you've done for us.
Thank you.
I don't think when you put it down on two or three sheets of paper, it can quite explain just the degree of work that you have done over the last year and your dedication. So we do appreciate that. All those in favor of Resolution 161-2017, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
That's all I have, thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Roser. Next item on the agenda is, hang on a second. Mr. Taylor?
Good morning. Good morning. We have two legislative bills this morning. They're actually both amended legislative bills, and they amend the budget from the prior fiscal year, which would be FY 2017, and the current fiscal year, which is FY 2018. Each is a separate bill. The first is amended legislative bill 2016-06, and it is amendment number one, and that would be the FY 2017 budget, as I indicated.
Entertain a motion from council for the introduction of amended legislative bill number 2016-06, amendment number one. Second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
This bill, then, is introduced this date. It is introduced by the council president at the request of the county executive, and it is an act to amend, confirm, and correct the general fund revenue and expense budget for the fiscal year 2017 to reflect the adjustments to the revenue and expense budget for the fiscal year ending July 30, 2017. It may be helpful, because essentially attached to the bill itself are probably a couple of dozen pages of budget documents that have on them, in the very left margin of certain pages in red ink, what the actual dollar changes are. But there is a summary sheet also in the budget briefing book, pardon me, and it would be at page, this would be PDF page on your electronic file, 316, if you'd like to look at it, that has them all summarized. I guess this part prepared that, and it's very helpful, I think, to look at that, as opposed to scanning through a whole bunch of pages, most of which don't have any changes on them. And I can summarize what those changes are if you'd like me to.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, they basically involve an increase in the budget of $1,094,350. Now, that is not being the result of increased taxes. There's no taxation increase as a result of that. Those funds are coming primarily from the use of the prior-year fund balance, in a sense, an accumulated surplus from the prior fiscal year that's available money in the bank, so to speak. It's being used for several things, and this would be the expense side. It is primarily for interest and principal on Board of Education bonds. Now, we've discussed this before. It happens to be a little short of $1 million of additional expense that apparently was overlooked when the budget was prepared. This does not result from any new debt, it's just that the money wasn't included in the budget when it was submitted to council. There are some other items on there, too. There are a couple of decreases. There's a decrease in contingency, and I'll just give rough numbers, $23,000 approximately. There's a decrease in elections, elections-budget reduction allocation, and I'll let Mr. Strausberg explain what that is, if you're interested. That's about $25,500. There's an increase in PEG grants, which I understand are grants that result from Comcast revenue of $19,000. I've already mentioned the principal and interest on the Board of Ed bonds. There's an increase in county interest on capital investment, that's county bonds, of $153,000 and change, and there's an increase in mosquito control vehicle maintenance of a little less than $1,000. So it's, again, it's about $1,094,350 on the expense side, balanced by the same amount on the increase of revenue side, primarily from the use of the prior-year fund balance. And with that, I guess if there's anything further, you better ask Mr. Strausberg.
Okay. Questions from council? Seeing none. All those in favor of the introduction of amended legislative bill number 2016-06, amendment number one, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, the introduction has been approved.
We can have the public hearing on that bill at the December 19th council meeting.
Public hearing on December 19th. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the second bill, now, this one was introduced before. This was introduced on November 7 of this year by the council president, again, at the request of the county executive. It's amended legislative bill, pardon me, 2017-05, and that particular bill that I just mentioned was the fiscal year 2018 budget. It was amended, as you'll recall, last summer, so this is amendment number two.
Entertain a motion from council to approve the introduction of amended legislative bill number 2017-05, amendment number two. Second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
This is an act to amend Exhibit A and C of the annual budget and appropriation bill, perant legislative bill number 2017-05, adopted June 12, 2017, to increase revenue projections and to increase departmental expense appropriations to rebalance the current fiscal year 2018 operating budget for general fund operations. Now, this bill, and again, there's a summary sheet, have the same situation, where you have a number of budget pages that have the actual dollar changes to particular line items in red, but there's also a summary sheet, and that's at PDF page 351, if you want to look at it. I can go through it real quickly. There are basically two categories in this one. The first are general fund items, and that general fund item is going to require, or general fund items, plural, is going to require $1,890,500 of additional revenue, which is coming almost entirely, again, from use of the prior-year fund balance. So, again, no tax increase. We're not talking about any tax increase to balance the budget, even if that were possible at this time. On the general fund items, the largest ones are, again, bond interest and principal, and this time, there are two series of bonds. They're the Board of Ed bonds, and there's also county bonds for other capital expenses, not under the Board of Ed. And that comes to about $1,500. There's an increase in workman's compensation of $150,000. There's a transfer to the Airport Enterprise Fund, $210,000, and I'll get a little further into the Airport Enterprise Fund, which is the second category, in just a minute. There's an increase in PEG grants. Again, this is, as I understand it, franchise revenue from Comcast, and that comes to that $1,890,500 figure, which is going to come primarily from the use of the prior-year fund balance. Now, the Airport Enterprise Fund is also requiring additional revenue of $610,000. I've already mentioned the transfer that's coming from the general fund of $210,000. There's landing fee revenue, which I'm supposing is primarily going to be under the new lease with Piedmont. Mr. Strausberg can explain that further, if I'm wrong about that. And there's also use of prior-year fund balance of $254,000, total of $610. The increased expenses that balance that out are aero maintenance of $325,000, professional services, $75,000, and capital building improvement of $210,000, $610,000. So that's the two categories and how those expenses and revenue adjustments balance out. And again, if you want to talk about any particular items, you better ask Mr. Strausberg.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions from council?
Yeah, I think we should probably ask Mr. Strausberg about some of these airport ones. They're, I think they're new, aren't they? Yeah, we didn't talk about them when this stuff came out before.
Still morning, good morning. The, first of all, let me go back to the 2017 budget amendment that Mr. Taylor covered very well. One thing I would, again, like to point out is that even including the principal and interest that had been omitted from the budget, the county fiscal year-end results will show a surplus of just under $1.8 million. So we have absorbed, we have absorbed that principal and interest with current year revenue. It won't come from prior-year revenue in actuality, however, that's how it has to be presented in the budget. We met with PKS. Yesterday? Yeah, yesterday morning. They have pretty much concluded their field work and have not found anything that they believe will materially alter the unaudited results that we've put forward. So with that being the case, moving on to the airport, let's take this in sequence. Let's talk about the landing fees. The landing fees in the existing Piedmont lease, and it's always been a part of the Piedmont lease, the lease contains provision that landing fees can be negotiated between Piedmont and the county through letter agreement. So there is no need to amend the lease, and we have negotiated those landing fees with, actually, American Airlines, and those landing fees have commenced, and we'll be collecting those, will probably be collecting in about 45-day arrears. The landing fees are commensurate with landing fees imposed by airports of our approximate size across their system. With regard to the other needed funds, there are really two steps that I would walk you through. The first is that you may recall that Dawn Veach, our current airport manager, had really just started at the airport at the point in time that the budget was in process. The former airport manager, Mr. Bryant, had resigned to take a new position, and for reasons that are unknown to either Dawn or anyone at the airport, the airfield, aero maintenance line at the airport was reduced by $345,000, and that makes the Airport Enterprise budget simply not sustainable. So.
What is, can you explain what the aero maintenance does?
Aero, it's called aero maintenance. That's really the maintenance of the airfield complex itself. So any required maintenance mark on the airfield campus is covered on that line, and typically the airfield maintenance ran, I think the annual budget was in the neighborhood of $450,000 a year, has been for time immemorial, and it was reduced, for some reason, to, I believe, $89,000.
$77,000?
$77,000, and we can't find any reason why that would have been done. It was an adjustment that was made in the Finance Department, and it's just simple error. The other thing that has occurred at the airport is that you will recall that we needed to get underway with the running of the water lines and the construction documents that need to be done in order to begin to construct that water line, and we forward-funded that money, and we used part of the general fund appropriation. We appropriated, if you recall, $225,000 this year to the airport. We did the same thing last year, and my thinking, and it's my error, my thinking was that we could forward-fund that, and that when we received our grant, our grant funding and/or our loan funding, that we could repay ourselves. Unfortunately, that isn't the way the grant and/or the loan that we're going to receive to actually construct the airport waterline works. They will not reimburse you for any funds that have already been expended. So what I unknowingly did was took another $142,000 out of the airport operating budget. That's my mistake. If we want to stay on track with constructing the water line, we've got to move forward with that, and if we want the airport to be able to continue to operate effectively, we've got to restore the money that was taken from the, from airfield maintenance. So an error on my part and an exculpatory error in the Finance Department.
Is there something about ARF, too? Is that the professional?
ARF, yeah, ARF, Mark will be very close to covering the cost of ARF for the balance of this current year. There will be a shortfall that has to be made up. When we go through the budget cycle for this coming year, we'll be presenting a budget within the enterprise that I think would show that the airport itself can cover the ARF costs. But for this year, again, recall that Piedmont had to pull their mechanics off of ARF detail for operational reasons, and we had to supplant that, and we've got, we've got a funding gap that we've got to close.
Now, weren't the landing fees supposed to make up for the ARF services?
The landing fees, the ARF, the landing fees should come to about, annually, Larry, should cover about 85% of ARF. However, I don't know whether we discussed this at a prior meeting, but the FAA precludes you from earmarking landing fees for specific uses. So I can't earmark those funds for ARF coverage. The long and the short of it is, from a practical standpoint, we're looking at those landing fees as essentially covering, we believe, 85% of the ARF costs.
Are there federal funds available for ARF services?
I'll have to ask Dawn about that, Larry. That's certainly something that we would look at in the next budget cycle, which we're going to be starting in January, and to go back, not to sidetrack, but with regard to the Folk Festival and with regard to the marathon, if we're contemplating financial general fund support for those events, we probably need to have those work sessions rather rapidly, because the budget cycle is on us. We're going to be starting that.
That's right.
In January, and we're going to have to factor that in. So I believe those work sessions are very appropriate, need to happen as quickly as they can. But anyway, back to the airport. I digress. I digress.
Professional services isn't, the $75,000 for that's not for ARF, then?
No.
Okay. Just because that was mentioned in my memo.
No. And again, to circle back, when we budgeted, when we budgeted 2018 income tax revenue, we budgeted flat to the prior year. We are seeing continued job growth. We believe that, again, in '18, our income tax revenue is going to exceed our actual from last year and our budget. I'm fairly confident that the expenses that we're incorporating into this '18 budget amendment will be covered through current year revenue and/or departmental savings. But it's appropriate to adjust the budget.
I know in the, originally, and I don't remember what it was, I don't know whether it was a contract that came before us or just something that was written in the materials, but I had thought that if it was a contract, it had specifically stated that the landing fees would be applied to firefighting, you know, repression, firefighting suppression, et cetera, et cetera.
That had been, in terms of pragmatic operations, John, and the financial operation of the airport, we really connect that one-to-one. We're going to, because Piedmont is not supplying the ARF crew as they used to, and the county or the airport is picking up that expense, we went to them and said, well, we're going to impose landing fees. They agreed to that.
Right.
So there's a one-to-one. The FAA simply will not allow you to earmark those funds, that's all.
Which is fine. I'd rather see it, I'd rather see it accounted for in general terms more than in earmarking.
Correct, because there may be some flexibility, again, going forward where you would not want those funds earmarked. So, but from a practical standpoint, again, we believe the landing fees, based on current tonnage, would approximate, approximate 85% of the annual ARF costs. And the crews in place, they're doing a very, very good job so far, so we're pleased.
I hope they haven't had anything to do.
That's what we hope for.
Is there a contract with the group now?
Yes.
Who is that?
Fiore. They're nationally known. They've got a very, very good reputation, and we did put out an RFP.
Right.
And they were by far the best vendor who replied, and so far, again, they're quite good, and they will actually also assist us with snow removal. They have experience with snow removal. We recall last year that we had some issues on the main runway with regard to a storm, so we have extra arms and legs this year for snow removal, because when these guys, when planes aren't operating, you know, they're in the ARF hangar and at loose ends. So rather than them being at loose ends, they can be out on the airfield assisting us with snow removal, and they have expertise in that regard. So it's a very good fit.
Without getting too far off the subject, the people that this company hired, are they local people, or do they bring people in for this job?
Yes, several of the people, actually, Joe came from Wallops Island.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're essentially, essentially local people. It's a pretty small universe, as you might expect with that.
Could you, could you just copy the contract?
Sure.
And a breakdown or a background information of the company?
Sure, absolutely.
Because if somebody asks, I can at least...
Happy to do it, absolutely.
Explain it to them.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Hang on a second. I want to get back to my... So, all those in favor of the introduction of amended legislative bill number 2017-05, amendment number two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Introduction of amended legislative bill number 2017-05, amendment number two, it passes.
We'll have the public hearing the same evening?
Same evening.
December 19.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strasburg.
We're dead.
Thank you very much. At this time, the council opens the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you would like to make in general, please come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes public comments. Council comments? Councilman Holliday?
I want to comment on the motion I made a while ago. I noticed there was some discontent in the room, and I want to thank the council for tabling that. Back in the early 80s, before there was a big push on environmentally, there was a piece of property bought in Parsonsburg that had a 275-gallon oil tank on it. The owners of the property that were selling it said it's no big deal. Person buying that property, not knowing any better, bought it anyway. Couple years later, Maryland Department of Environment came along, knowing that tank was there from records they had from oil companies, and demanded it be removed. Along with the tank, there had to be thousands and thousands of dollars of dirt hauled away. And when that was done, there had to be wells placed next to where that tank was to test the groundwater for a number of years. This person that did this almost went bankrupt because of it. If it hadn't been for a friendly banker that wanted to see him stay in business, he would have gone. He had to borrow money against his business. He had to borrow money against his home to keep his business open through all this ordeal. Reason I know this so well is because it was me that this happened to. Now, we got our first letter in July 18, the county executive's office done. I can't see responsibly why anybody would agree to accept a piece of land or want to accept a piece of land if they'd known that there had been some sort of activity, and I'm not implying that there is anything wrong with it, because that would, that has to be done through environmental studies, but how you could want to accept a piece of land that's not had an environmental study done on it, especially one that you know has had activity done on it. Now, that's not the only problem I've had with this, because we have discussed it before. I think the county has too much land already that they're not using. But in the four months, five months since that letter came in, there should have been environmental studies done on this piece of property, especially where this activity took place. And for it not to be done would be irresponsible to saddle the taxpayers with a piece of property that in the future could cost a lot of money. So that's why I made, asked for that amendment, and I appreciate the council doing that. So with that said, it's Thanksgiving, and I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Holliday. Any other council comments? Having said that, we'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work session.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. The first item on the open work session has been postponed at the request of Mr. Strasburg. I would like to take a five-minute recess and then come back to go through the grant program and the animal ordinance committee. After that, we will, with the council's blessing, recess for lunch, and then come back to do the amendment of the capital improvement program, reference to Barron Creek. But as of right now, I want to take, I'd like to entertain a motion, or I'd like someone to entertain, you know, I'd like to have a five-minute recess first, if we could.
You can move that on your own.
Probably guess I could.
Seven minutes.
We're taking it. Thanks. It's going to take me five minutes just to finish it.